Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those who are here with us tonight in the council chambers, if you desire to address the council and the planning commission during this meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes speaking time. Our city clerk, Debra Thomas, will make a Zoom broadcasting announcement now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of May 6th is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 862-3251-8414, and enter password number 550556. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. This time, I will call to order the special joint meeting workshop of the City Council and the Planning Commission Site and Architectural Review Board of the City of Grand Terrace for Thursday, May 6, 2021. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible) to reply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and her God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Alneese.
Present.
Commissioner McConnell.
Present.
Commissioner Sessena.
Present.
Vice Chair Briggs.
Present.
Chairman Giroux.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Here.
Mayor McNabbou.
Present.
Councilmember Allen is absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Do we have anybody present for public comment or calling in?
We do not.
Okay.
The individual on our Zoom, never mind.
Okay, so I would open public comment at this time for comments, but since we have none, I'm not going to read through the whole paragraph. Is there anybody in the council chambers that was wishing to speak at this time? No, all right, so we'll close public comment, and we'll move to our one item of business tonight, this joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop for the Barton Road Specific Plan Update. We have Director Steven Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor McNabbou, council members, and to the planning commission. For the record, my name is Steve Weiss. I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services. The item before you is a joint specific plan update meeting regarding the Barton Road Corridor. Council directed staff to have this workshop, and we've assembled a team of outstanding professionals to be here tonight. I'd like to introduce Peter Miniger. He's the project manager for Michael Baker International. Also have David Christie here, who's a project manager, and also by Zoom, all the way back in Kentucky, we have Emily Elliott, who will be zooming in. She couldn't make it, but she wants to be here. And also, Robert Eisenbeis, who is our interim Public Works Director, will also be here. So, to no other, may as well just start it off. I will introduce Peter, and he'll start the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, Council Planning Commission. Thanks for having me. I'm Peter Miniger, as Steve mentioned, and I'm assuming this is the slide clicker, so let's just give this.
Will you tell me your last name again? I can't hear it through the mask.
Can I? Yeah. I was going to ask, is that, am I, most of the time, we've been doing these through Zoom recently, so I'll make sure I'm respectful here. So my name's Peter Miniger, and I'm the project manager for the Michael Baker team. As Steve mentioned, we have Emily Elliott here via Zoom. It's funny enough, she actually lives the closest to the site, but actually happens to be out in Kentucky at the moment, so she's thankful to have her here via Zoom. And then David as well, from our team, so really excited to be here tonight to talk about this project. So, just want to give you an idea of what we're going to be covering in the presentation before we get to the discussion. So I want to talk briefly about the specific plan and give a quick overview, so we all kind of have the same baseline understanding and walk through that. I'll also talk through a bit of background information on the Town Square Master Development Plan, and then I'll walk through the purpose of the specific plan amendment and what really brought us here today to talk about that amendment, and what we're proposing to amend in our discussions with the city. So, with that, let's jump right in. So, and I know you guys are all familiar with the specific plan, but just some quick, kind of high-level details. It covers a 1.3-mile span along Barton Road, and it covers multiple planning areas, and the intended intent of the specific plan is really to develop a downtown in that area along Barton Road. So it provides some general development regulations and design guidelines, but it does require a master development plan within certain areas. So, that brings us to the, there we go, Town Square Master Development Plan. And so that covers a portion of Planning Area 1 of the specific plan, and it provides additional policies and details to guide development there in that portion of the planning area. And so, let's go to this next slide. You can see kind of the general footprint of where that is, and we'll be focusing really on the vacant land in the center, kind of bottom right there. So, the reason that Michael Baker was brought on was to entitle the Greens Group project, and part of that development, we needed, and I apologize, I'm losing my voice, I've been on calls all day, let me grab my water. I don't know about you guys, but there's been a lot of conference calls these days, so kind of at the tail end of that. So we were brought on to entitle, to work with the city on the entitlement process for the Greens Group project, and they're proposing a 70-room hotel, some restaurant space, residential units, and buildings that really are more oriented towards the street. They're a little different intensity than what's currently in the corridor, and in order to entitle that project, it requires some amendments to that specific plan, and then with that, the master plan as well. So as we looked from a practical perspective of how do we entitle this project and how do we allow this development to continue, it would have required amendments to the specific plan as well as the master plan. And so, in talking with city staff, there's some practical challenges with that. It would require two CEQA processes, one to amend the specific plan and one to amend the master plan, and really realized that there was some redundancy between the two documents. And so, as we've gone through the entitlement process and talked with the city, we've worked through what would we need to change in the specific plan to allow this development to move forward, and then, secondly, could we remove the master plan? Is that something that we could dissolve and rely solely on the specific plan document So, there's a number of proposed amendments to the specific plan that we've worked through with city staff, and again, these would be what would be required really to allow for the Greens Group project to move forward, but then a number, you know, if there's similar projects that may come forward in the future, it would allow those projects to come forward as well. And so, most of these changes are related to the development standards, and so I'm going to talk a bit about these, and then I know I had the chance to listen to your discussion a couple weeks ago in the city council meeting about architectural design, and we'll get to that, and that's part of the design guidelines, but the development standards really are the metric standards that developments held to and the requirements for development to move forward. So, there's a few things that would need to be changed to allow for the Greens Group project to move forward, which would be the building setback. Right now, it's a minimum 25-foot building setback from the street, and we would, you know, in talking with planning staff, we're proposing a maximum 10-foot setback, so really pulling the buildings up towards the street. The second piece is increasing the building frontage along the street, so you're moving, instead of a minimum of 35% of the building along the street, requiring a minimum of 50% of the building frontage to be directly up along the street there. We'd remove the drive-through setback. We're proposing the addition of allowing mixed-use residential development, allowing the addition of pylon signs and kind of changing the regulations around those slightly, and then the last piece would be increasing the maximum height, from a height of 28 feet to a height of 55 feet, and then beyond that, 70 feet for features. So that's like architectural additions to the top of the buildings. So, beyond those kind of focused development standard updates, there's some small policy updates that are being proposed as well. And so, the inclusion of a multi-use trail along the Gage Canal, the undergrounding of utilities along Barton Road, talking through some lot consolidation incentives and encouraging developers to put multiple lots together to make one large cohesive development instead of, you know, developments per lot. Right-of-way landscaping consistency and increasing the standards for landscaping, taking another look at parking and removing excess parking where it's not needed, and then, lastly, the inclusion of just some additional storefront opportunities and retail opportunities. So, now, you know, that's kind of what got us to here today, and that's really what led to the amendments to the specific plan. And so then, I know there was a lot of discussion around architectural styles and architectural design a couple weeks ago during the city council meeting, and so I wanted to walk through what's currently in the specific plan and what are the guidelines that are in there. So the current design guidelines, and just a quick sidebar, the guidelines really are just that. They're guiding principles, they're not hard and fast, like the development standards that have to be met. So they really are just to guide the planning and design process. And so, there's kind of a, it never explicitly says, I did a word search in it the other day, Cape Cod is never explicitly mentioned in there, but we can kind of call it what it is. It is kind of a Cape Cod-type style. And then the word village is said in there a number of times. It really does focus on creating a village-type development along the corridor. So, the current design guidelines do mention a number of different materials, wood siding, wood shingle walls, and then there's some limited use of stone, things of that sort, and then stucco in very limited capacities, and there's some language in there speaking to that. And you can see, these are direct excerpts pulled from the specific plan itself of the design styles that it recommends. And then, again, there's some things it really does encourage, so River Cobble and Slate, you know, I mentioned wood shake, wood shingle siding, and here's kind of a sketch of what would be recommended as a typical development under those guidelines that's included in the specific plan today. So, I did want to take a minute, and I took some screenshots of different developments along the corridor that are there today, and really what we do see is a pretty wide range. You have the Miguel Jr.'s building that, you know, is a largely stucco-type design, and then you also have other buildings that do tend to have more of that Cape Cod-type design. So, just to show what's currently proposed for the Greens Group project, this is obviously kind of more aligned with that Miguel Jr.'s building, a little more modern of a design, you know, and obviously, there's, it's a taller, slightly more intense development. And then, here's an interior shot of the development where the residential development would be. So just to give you an idea of the current development that's being reviewed and kind of what led to where we are today. So, with that, I really did just want to give kind of a quick overview of the process and provide the context of why we're, you know, why the city's looking at amending the specific plan and really what our role is. And then really, I'm here today to hear what all of you have to say about the architectural design and any comments that you have, and then we'll take those and we'll continue to work with city staff as we refine the specific plan document. So with that, we're here to answer any questions, and yeah, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Miniger. All right, what questions do we have of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen, oh, and I will recognize that Councilmember Allen has arrived.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, when we were first started discussing this, like the presenter said, we discussed about the architectural designs, and while I'm not opposed to this Cape Cod look, I think it harks back to what we used to be, what we used to, I mean, it's like welcome back 1970 to me. And so, I'm more excited about what is, you know, currently, you know, I don't want to say a fad, because I don't want something that's popular today and tomorrow's going to be ugly, but something that's more up-to-date and more up to style with what's currently being built in the West Coast.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Questions of staff? Commissioner McConnell?
Hello? Thank you. Just for an overall, what is the procedure we're going to go through this evening as far as questions? We're going to go through the packet and different aspects that we can ask the consultants.
Do you have questions right now for the consultants?
Yes.
Okay, what are your questions? They're here to answer questions?
Sure. I just want to make sure that it didn't get overlooked, and I'm sure some of the other people have questions of.
And this is a time for questions?
Thank you very much. So, I grew up in a village back in Ohio, so I understand the atmosphere and ambiance that they're trying to create with this village concept. So my question is, a five-story building, we have three-story buildings now, anything bigger than a three-story building in general, would that be part of a village atmosphere?
Yeah, so, to address that, so the way the Greens Group currently proposes it, and I'm going to use them as the example, because they're the current proposal along the corridor, they're proposing the higher buildings that are proposed are pushed back kind of away from the street, and that lot that they're proposing it on is fairly wide, you know, it has some depth. So I understand the perception of a five-foot building right off the bat just sounds tall, and it sounds like it's going to be looming kind of right over the street, and I understand, I'm from a small town, I've seen our downtown gentrify over the years and buildings get taller, and so, you know, to answer that question, I do think it's possible for them to do something that's of the right scale and of the right design to kind of exemplify that village feel, but I, yeah, I think it does require some really clear planning and making sure that the way it's designed doesn't create kind of a mass along the road that feels urban or overly urban, especially compared to the current development along the corridor.
And this particular project that you were talking about with the Greens Group, that has a long way to go through planning commission and a lot of other processes.
Correct, correct, yeah. We're, yeah, so, we've, we started reviewing the application under contract with the city through our on-call contract, and as we started reviewing it, realized the changes that would be required to the specific plan document, and then that's kind of where we've paused. So, yeah, there's a whole.
So that's the reason for us reviewing this, but we are not looking at that project tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Commissioner McConnell, you have further questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. It was designed to be a general question, because somebody built a three-story building here once in the past, and others have built three-story buildings. Okay, I was referring to setting the precedence. Okay, you mentioned there was a multi-use trail on Gage, what would the multi-use be?
So just a multi, you know, biking, walking, not just a sidewalk, a, yeah, pedestrian-type trail.
Any other, no, e-vehicles in the future?
What's that?
Any types of single-person e-vehicles in the future?
You know, we don't specifically address that in the document, but that is the hot topic at the moment, as e-bikes come out, I understand that.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up to help everyone keep in mind that the future is upon us. Okay, this was, the original Barton Road Specific Plan was designed in 1990, really before any social media, so they couldn't really conceive, trying to look forward, what changes would be made. So now, we have social media, we have the internet, we have Amazon, and that type of business sucking up brick and mortar. So, how do you think that's going to affect any retail developments, but specifically in Grand Terrace and small communities?
It's an interesting question. It's something that I think the planning field as a whole is really focused on. This week is actually the National Planning Conference for the American Planning Association, and I've been attending periodically throughout the week where I can, and that's been, especially with the pandemic, a big question. I think one of the things that's included in the specific plan, amendments that we've suggested would be allowing mixed-use residential and allowing a bit more of a variety of retail uses, so I think it does include some future flexibility, and I think that's important, given today's day and age and just the way that development's continuing to evolve.
Uses that we may not even be able to comprehend yet.
Very true.
I'm just, some of my questions are to stimulate, you know, people's minds, and so, okay, the project location, Barton Road Specific Plan that we're addressing tonight addresses all the retail in the future retail in Grand Terrace, correct?
Yeah.
Pretty much, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so my question is, we have a street called Commerce Way that's going to be developing commerce and retail, so should we, when should we be addressing that and/or including that?
Except if we're talking about the Barton Road Specific Plan.
Should we expand it?
Are you going to take a step back and talk about a master plan for the whole city, or are you talking about a Barton Road Specific Plan and a Commerce Specific Plan? And I think that's a good question for our planning director. Director Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor, and all the members here. I think the specific planning process is something, we're looking at everything right now. There's no doubt that the gateway or homecoming specific plan does have some areas with flexible zoning incorporated in it, and they, and the market conditions have a lot to do with what we're going to see out there. The residential even has a, even has a range of anywhere from like 400 to 900 units. There is potential for retail and other opportunities, but Commerce Way is a real game-changer along the linear part of the adjacent to the freeway, and I think that's going to have tremendous exposure. Now Barton Road is a little different, because obviously, that's the, that's your main artery that goes through the city, so that's an activity corridor for commercial, retail, medical office, you know, things like that. What, you know, what we've been looking at very carefully is historically how this Barton Road Corridor has been developed, and generally, it's been underdeveloped even based on the standards from 1990. For example, if you go by Woody's and that center over there, there's actually a zero setback within that area, and nobody built that to that level. They built pretty much the, you know, what was popular within the '70s. But now we're seeing, and I use this term activate, to be able to put high-quality businesses in an area where people actually can, you know, live and walk and do things, and I think since the roundabout has been developed, the quality, you can already see that it's, everything's starting to get more modernized, more up-to-date, and I think the Barton Road area is quite unique as opposed to the Commerce Way area. The Commerce Way area is much more of a master-planned type of concept, where this is more of an organic process, where uses will evolve, but, you know, it's not just about the Greens Group, you know, it's about, you've got like, for example, Hollywood Video, Mr. TV Video, you know, you have vacant buildings in there that eventually are going to turn into more interesting businesses within the corridor, so to be able to give what I would consider people that really want to invest in the community an opportunity to build within this area and, you know, own their property, do good things with their property, to be able to create, you know, let's just say cafes, and you know, the ULI Urban Land Institute they're talking about, you know, even the demographics suggest that there's professional people that really want to be in more of a communal atmosphere, and I think the corridor, Barton Road, has tremendous potential, all the way, basically from, you know, Commerce Way, Michigan, all the way up a little past Mount Vernon. That area is a very, very, will be a very, very nice area.
Thank you, Director Weiss. But more to the point, when you have your consultant who is reviewing our Barton Road Specific Plan for updates, are you pointing them towards Commerce Way and what might happen there, so that maybe that creates a decision about how they suggest updates to it?
Well, I mean, I, they definitely are very aware of it, and we're trying to concentrate on which works best. I mean, part of Barton Road is, what's a little bit unique about it, it was formerly was redevelopment area in there, and disposing of the land and doing all the modern right things is important, while Commerce Way is a different geographic area too, and I think you could, they will complement each other, because I think there will be, there just isn't that much land left along the 215, for example, to put in the kinds of uses that maybe wouldn't fit exactly within the Barton Road Corridor area, so I think they're both amazing opportunities, but they're also unique of each other.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Commissioner McConnell?
Thank you. Mr., Mr. Peter?
Okay.
I assume you're familiar with the demographics of this city?
Yes, I am.
Do you think, and are you familiar with the restricted access, because we're geographically boxed in?
I am.
Good. So do you think a full build-out would be supported by the demographics that we currently have and the lack of pass-through traffic?
Yeah, you know, and it's a, I guess there's some speculation there. I think, you know, the goal of changing the specific plan is to allow different types of development to come forward and some changes in development to come forward. I think, you know, at the end of the day, it's really going to come down to increasing opportunity for developers to come here and build along that corridor as time goes on, and I think they're going to be doing that when it makes sense from a financial standpoint for them, and so, you know, I do think that if we provide the opportunity for the development, that, you know, that they will continue to, you know, potentially come and want to build in the area. As far as access, you know, I think the, there's two pieces to this. You have the existing community in Grand Terrace, but also, part of this change allows for mixed-use residential in that part of the corridor, and so I think you also have a group of people, and Steve had mentioned earlier, people who want to live in a community-type development, want to live somewhere where there's services immediately available, and so I think there's the existing population, but I also think, you know, there will be some population there at some point if a developer comes in and proceeds with mixed use.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple more questions from others, and so I'll come back to you, Commissioner McConnell.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go with Councilmember Allen, Mayor Protem Hussey, and then Councilmember Robles. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have two questions for the presenter. Yeah, I got here late, so I don't know your name, but I'm Jeff.
I'm Peter.
Okay, great. It has to do with setbacks. I noticed in your presentation, you're talking about changing the setbacks to 10 feet and also allowing drive-through, and I'm wondering, how wide is a drive-through lane supposed to be? And if we, and is that going to infringe on our sidewalk? If you have a 10-foot setback in a drive-through, are we going to have a sidewalk?
Director Weiss.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen, for the question. We have looked at that very closely. What has happened is, in the last 10, eight years, we've had a number of developments, especially in the Town Center area, Miguel's Jr., recently Taco Bell, and then we recently had the Bickle Project, which is the multi-tenant site. They all had to get, go through the Variance Project, and they had to justify how these facilities will facilities will operate with a reduced setback. But I want to remind you, the reason is, is because there's a very generous landscape setback within this area. We're not suggesting to have less landscaping. We're suggesting to activate this area with patio seating, areas that, you know, you can actually enjoy the area. And that's, that's really the intent of it. So, so if we don't have to go through variance, the variance process, which 100% of the time, the planning commission has supported this, we think that this is the most efficient, economical, and way to do it, and, and let's get these businesses open.
So nobody in an electric wheelchair or a wheelchair is going to compete with a car, play chicken with a bicycle or a skateboarder going past these buildings?
You are.
There's going to be plenty of sidewalk space, is that correct?
Yes, you are correct, Councilman Allen.
Mister Duffy, for the record.
I'm sorry, maybe it's, for the record, you're the city manager.
Thank you, City Manager.
So the most important point I think that you're making is very clear, is that there's not going to be a conflict or a compromise of ADA access on sidewalks, and Mister Weiss is pointing out in terms of landscaping. What we're trying to do is, the setbacks are so distant right now, is that what actually has to happen is every time we've had a new development in the last, the last three years, they've had to go and request a variance to do exactly what they're doing. So there isn't a conflict right now with Miguel's. The new Taco Bell won't have a conflict, and the new Wingstop won't have a conflict. And you'll see that it's a, it's a way to marry new standards with also retaining the access to, to, to the various facilities. So there'll be no compromise in, in access and sidewalk space and drive, and drive-throughs.
Okay. Second question is about building height. We went over that, she, or, we were discussing stories versus feet, and one of the standards is three, you know, we, we say we have this three-story limit in the city right now, but I mean, is there a number of feet assigned to that story? In other words, is a story 10 feet, or can a story be 20 feet? And then if you have a three-story limit, you know, and so 57 feet, you know, on a height limit, like Peter was talking about, so are we going to go with feet or are we going to go with stories in a height limit?
It's, Councilmember Allen, it is based on height, just to be clear on that. I think what you're looking at is a rule of thumb, is a story is about 10 feet, somewhere in that area. But I want to also remind that architecturally, and obviously the planning commission will look at this closely, the design of the buildings are going to be developed so they're, they don't give you that column or wall feel. They have to be, you know, set back, stepped back, or maybe, you know, given some interesting articulation so people find the area interesting. It's not, the intention is not to create a wall along Barton Road.
So, so then the tallest building won't be on the street, right up on the street? Is that what you're saying?
Not exactly.
Ah.
It could be, it could be, but it could have interesting articulation. For example, you could have a, you could have a hotel, and you could have, say, something on the ground floor that might have a nice patio or something like that. Or like, as Mister Duffy talked about, the Wingstop over there, they're going to have a very nice patio in there, there will be a community dining area within that area that's going to have beautiful bougainvillea and, and nice, you know, siding and, you know, things like that, and shading, and shade is really one of the important things. And we, and when we presented in December on what K T U A did for the Barton Road Streetscape, they stressed shade a lot.
And sir, also, in terms of the height issue, I think the presenter did mention that you can have, there's some requirements, right now we have 28 feet as height. And then, so the new method might be 55 feet, but then it'd be go even higher if you have an architectural structure like a bell or a tower of some type that, that's not occupied, but it's an architectural feature. And so that's what they were, they were looking at in terms of that process.
Yeah, I saw, I remember that was up to 70-something feet.
Right.
Above the 50, yeah.
Right.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Elliott from Michael Baker had had her hand raised to add to the conversation and the answers, and so I'm going to give her the opportunity to speak now, and then we'll go to Mayor Protem for his questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I really just wanted to jump in and offer support to Mister Midiger and Mister Weiss. So far, they're filling the questions quite well. So I really don't have too much more to add at this time. I just wanted to make sure that we're available, that we've got any additional Q and A support. One thing that I did want to mention on the drive-through setback question was, yes, definitely to eliminate that need for variances since there is that track record of approving them anyway, but we do want to incentivize screening and pedestrian activation as part of that trade-off for allowing developers to put their drive-throughs closer to the street. So that's why there's that provision for screening with the drive-through being moved closer to the street.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. All right, Mayor Protem Hossi, you had questions?
Yes, probably before, I don't know, Mister Weiss or Mister Duffy. Question is, like we're talking about, Councilmember Allen was talking about the height and the feet. My concern, I mean, just popped in my head, but if we go that high with our fire department, are they going to be adequately, you know, if there is a structure fire, can our fire department han, handle the extra storage? I mean, do we have the proper equipment? Do we look into that before we go ahead and sign off on the, a higher building?
Sure, sir. So, so part of the requirement for any new development is we have a design review board, a, before they actually submit their document for, for processing, we sit down with the fire department, sewer, water department, all of our staff, public works, and all of our staff sit down together, and we say, well, what, what do we really need in order for you to move forward? What do we need? So the fire department will be there in the beginning, and if the fire department says we don't have the equipment to do, to service a five-story building, then one of the requirements would be that, that either they would pay a, for a new truck unit or share with an existing unit to be there in a certain period of time. And so absolutely, all of those services are actually addressed, and we've given those to the developers before they even submit their, their, their project, because we want to make sure they understand what the requirements are for the, for their, their application to move forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Yeah, my main concern when I saw this go by, because the 1990 specific plan, as a citizen, before social media, I actually came and paid for the documents and followed very closely, and what I saw was where there was going to be landscaping, some was put, and then it was taken out, and sidewalk was put there, and I guess that's because we had variances. The Cape Cod, for example, where the pizza place is, was taken down and, and replaced with stucco. So it just seemed to me that if we're not going to do Cape Cod, and I don't think Cape Cod really worked for our climate, it, everyone has deteriorating siding. I had to replace, you know, my, my home completely. But now we have a pretty shabby-looking city, you know, no overarching theme. So I was hoping what, what this would do is we could have some kind of theme, and it doesn't need to be, again, you said these are recommendations anyways, but to kind of have some kind of theme, some kind of palette, and some kind of accent pieces that would fit with our town, like blue awnings, for example, or, or some things, because what I was trying to think ahead is maybe we could use some of our economic development money to do kind of a facade update that has a schematic plan to it. I know we did it before, right before I got on the council eight years ago, and it was just, everybody did their own thing again, and there was no unifying architectural theme. So I guess can, can we update that Cape Cod? And the one, and also, who makes the decision where we have houses instead of being brought down and new buildings replaced? Because like, some of those buildings, they're, they have like old residential landscape and new additions to a house, and they don't seem to kind of look brought into what should be our main corridor's look.
Well, I, I think those are excellent points, Councilmember Robles. Well, part of, when we made our January presentation, though it was still draft, in the draft format, the Barton Road Streetscape Plan did show beautification concepts and goals and policies dealing with parkways, street furniture, street trees, you know, no medians, you know? We had a little discussion on some of that, on the, on, you know, obviously some of the tougher intersections like Mount Vernon, you know? But when it, when it comes to, we have, our reality is, you know, we do have some old redevelopment land, we have some non-conforming structures in the area, and all of that is going to change. I mean, as the, the roundabout went in, has gone in, we've already seen a lot more interest in developers that want to come in and, and really beautify Barton Road. And to, 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 at least in my mind, the thematic question of yours, I think, is, is starting to happen already.
And also, when a house on Barton Road transfers over to commercial property, for example, we had a salon that, that came on board, staff actually has to address those issues. So if there were some standards that, on, on Barton Road that's required for, for a residential property, that's converted over to commercial to have a commercial facade on it, that would be the time for us to do it along with the planning commission. So, so I understand exactly where you're going with this, because you do have a, you have a conversion, but you don't have the look and feel, consistency feel. So absolutely right. So one of the things that staff will need to do, and obviously, some of the feedback from the Barton specific plan will actually, we need to look at how to make those conversions. So if it's going to be a total demolition, then that's okay. But if they're going to be, do a rehab, we need to make sure that it's going to be, it's going to fit the commercial standard versus a house that's now converted to, to a business. So point well taken.
Thank you. Now, if that's going to be the standard, wouldn't somebody point to one of the other houses that were converted to say, well, you allowed them to do that, why can't I?
Well, I, I think part of the whole dynamic is that what we can do is we can, we can look at not only trying to create a standard, but also provide some incentives to turn over to, to that new, I think, one of the things we want to do is we want to partner with businesses to encourage them to, to come forward with, in our, in our landscaping and in our, in our desire for, for facade. So obviously, I think we, all are respecters of private property, but there's a, there's a certain look and feel that you want your consistency for your downtown to look like. So you want to offer some sort of incentives to be able to help them, help them get there.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
A hundred years ago, when this city was incorporated, it's actually about 43 years ago, is when this 1988 concept was kind of discovered as a misnomer. It was started incorporation in '78, and by '88, it dawned on us that we had a hodgepodge mess. And most of that had come from county circumstances, because as we know, when people submit things to the county, they kind of got whatever they wanted if it was out in the outskirts and it meant money. When Grand Terrace started to take over, we became a tract residential type of circumstance. Consistency in planning started to really kind of swing in, and Patrizio Maturazzi was the planning director. I'm wondering, and I guess this question is for our consultant, although the director can definitely address this, I see lots of references of village. Village doesn't mean anything today.
Right.
And I think that's pretty accurate. The unfortunate thing is, is that a lot of people that were involved with that at the time, and I was on the general plan task force back in 1990, I even got a little dealie that said, you know, "Thank you for doing this stuff." I kind of wonder why they thank me now, but in the long run, have we had any input from developers?
Yes.
Okay, so in input from the developers, and let me go the next step. When we revamped the general plan, we did something a little bit innovative, and it was only because it had kind of happened out there in some places, specifically nasty Old Orange County. And what they did was, is that we found lots of photos, photo examples of things. Instead of these Mickey Mouse drawings and things, they're trying to show, you know, Cape Cod circumstances that are completely no longer applicable for what we want to do, we found photos and then inserted those into the program as a way to allow the, an incoming developer to be able to process their stuff and have a pretty good guideline on what could happen. And I submit to you that I think we need to go back to the photo concept on these ideas of the design guidelines, because I think we're missing the mark by a hundred miles if we leave the stuff where it is. For example, I know there are some requirements in the parking and so on, it says the foot, the setback's got to be 300 feet. And if it's not 300 feet, then you do something else. Well, what's happened over time is, is that on the corner of Mount Vernon and Barton, some of the units got figured in there to have the commercial units pushed up against the sidewalk, and then an alley in the back of it with the idea, and this is something that, I guess it happened over in Riverside someplace, in their downtown. And the idea was, is that you would have loading, you know, capacity to go behind the units, but all the, you know, the pedestrian-oriented traffic that we were looking for would then be comfortable with the idea of units right up to the curb, you know, like in Newport Beach. Or at least they used to do that in Newport Beach, and those kinds of things. So now you have a hodgepodge of one of those, and then you've got stuff way back there in the parking, in the front, and then you've got some residential houses, and then on the south side, we don't know what we got. And we got, we got big, huge parking areas that people try to, you know, steal money from us for. So my, my thought is, is that in the design guidelines, we really need to have some photo identifiers for this massing and for the architectural styles and the rest of it, because it can not only allow the developers that come in to be creative, but it also allows them then not to have to float a CUP every time they turn around. Right? And it also allows us to streamline. We can get things done fairly quick if we don't have to go through a year's worth of process on it, and it's because we gave them an idea of what we want to do. You know, we don't do it like M W D where, you know, you submit your design and then they go, okay, well, that's not it.
[laughing]
You know, that's where we don't get any work done. Now, the next item I'm thinking of is, is that these maps are 30 years old, and in some instances, they work. But when it comes to the actual elements, especially the way we're marching down from the freeway back to the eastern corridor, or portion of the corridor, these things don't even include any of the predominant uses that we're going to have, that we have, actually. And so we at least have to have one exhibit eventually that shows the existing uses that have been programmed in, done, paving swept, the whole shoot match, and then the items that could be left to go. Because when I look at it, it looks like we've got a whole lot of stuff to play with.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be very cookie cutter in that case, you know, at least along Barton Road. So it would seem to me that we would need a real-world exhibit map, and what we got right now doesn't even get close to it. All it does is, is give us some stuff that was Christmas time, you know, wish lists. And then I was surprised to hear that we've gotten rid of the median? Really?
Which median?
I heard some kind of a discussion that there's not going to be consideration for a median down Barton Road?
Well, I think extending that one.
Oh, down the center?
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know where the limits might be at this point, but I know for years, the commercial section screamed bloody murder every time somebody said something about a median.
Right.
I don't care. I think there are a lot, I mean, it's not, it doesn't say I don't care about business, but what I do care about is good design. And I think, you know, in my quest to try to slow things down, for people to be able to find these places to buy from and so on, medians can be used selectively to give it a better feel of arrival. it a better feel of arrival. We need a feel of arrival. We only got one stupid street. I mean, basically, we're talking about Barton Road right here. We're not talking about Michigan, we're not talking about Commerce. I think McConnell here made a good point about Commerce, but in this particular study, we're only paying these guys to do the Barton Road specific plan. And we do have others that are, that are proffering the Commerce thing, and, you know, we just don't have anything going on, on Mount Vernon.
If I'm, I'm going to have you pause for a minute.
Yes.
And say, Mr. Weiss, will you address the issue of the median? Because you did bring that up in connection with the study that we had earlier. And so specifically, what were your comments, and, and where did you mean to go with that?
There wasn't, oh, there was no specific identification of a median. I know at the January meeting, there was a discussion of talking about how, how does Mount Vernon, how does Mount Vernon work? You know, when you go down the hill, and you make your left onto Mount Vernon from Barton, and how do you control traffic in that area? But it was nothing, nothing was finalized on that area, but there was no discussion of creating additional medians on Barton, certainly not.
Okay.
Well, this is another thing, and I'd like to attach this.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'd like to attach this, and that is, we have entirely too many curb cuts on Barton Road. And it's something we really need to address. We are really fortunate that we haven't had somebody killed. With the median concept and changing some of the curb cut situations, like, for example, the Bank of America, give me a break. You've got a, a sixty-foot-wide curb cut there. That, that just makes no sense whatsoever. Plus, you've got a driveway right next to it, plus you've got another driveway next to that, and another driveway just down the street from that, and then you've got a gas station. I mean, it just, you know, it, but that's county stuff.
And the Barton Road specific plan says we're not going to do that.
Yeah, that's what.
It does say that.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to not, I would for sure not like to do that. But in that, I'm thinking of it in the same kind of control with the median. Because you can control some of that traffic situation with a median, as well as the integral with curb cuts. You don't need as many curb cuts if you're not going to go anywhere with them.
Well, Mayor, one of the things, too, that, when you talk about the Barton Road and the number of curb cuts that we have, those driveways are not to ADA standards, because you can't go, the right, driveways go through, and you, and you, you're on a sidewalk, and you go down.
Yep.
They have to be flat for, for someone to go by in a wheelchair. So those driveways all need to be updated. So maybe we have that discussion, too, as we look at potentially examining those curb cuts, but certainly bringing them to ADA standards is, is an important component.
I also heard an expression, and I'm almost done, at least on this first pass. I heard the expression, something about dealing with excess parking. There is no such thing as excess parking.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I concur.
Okay. I guess for, right now, I think it would be a, a good idea for us to, to try to integrate the general plan exhibits with the specific plan portion of this, to be able to try to meld those two pieces together. All the infrastructure, the parking, all the rest of that jazz, okay, but when it comes to architectural elements, and the massing, and the shadowing, and the rest of it, it stinks. And so we're going to have to show our people what they can get creative with. And I think, you know, we need to almost just throw that whole mess out. It's a small portion of it, but it, it's still going to have to be thrown out. It's thirty years old, and it's stale. And I think it's a valid point, again, that McConnell brought up, this is a new world. We got a tech situation. We didn't know this, you know, a few years ago. And if anybody's a dinosaur, I am. But this dinosaur's been drug in, kicking and screaming. And I understand that, you know, putting in a bunch of store stuff might be the dumbest thing we can do. So we really have to get that input squared away before we, you know, allow people to either make mistakes or create a, you know, a, a white elephant. That's all for right now, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm sure Commissioner McConnell has more to say, but I'm going to ask the other commissioners if they have questions or comments that they want to make at this time. Okay, Commissioner Allenies, and then Drew.
Just one quick question. What, what type of incentives can we offer them to, to bring in and conform to what we're looking at?
I'll defer to Emily Elliott on our team on the development incentive. She spent a lot of time working on, on those amendments.
Thank you, happy to address that. And I was typing notes as you were talking, so if you wouldn't mind repeating your question for me.
What type of incentives are available for the developers?
Right now, some of the incentives that exist, and I'm recalling these from the top of my head, but it has to do with reducing the number of parking, or allowing parking to be shared among different uses of multi-tenant centers. And I believe that there also are some landscaping reduction incentives, but so far, the incentives are fairly minimal. We're open to feedback on what incentives the planning commission and city council may feel to be more appropriate, especially to consolidate lots, if that may be retaining those parking reductions, or shared parking agreements, increasing building heights, or perhaps allowing additional density for the residential portions. We're all ears for what you have in mind for incentives.
I'd like to address, thank you, Emily, that's, that's very good. I just want to emphasize, when it comes to, we are concerned about parking. There's never enough parking, we, we understand. But in two thousand twenty-one, in the types of projects we've seen, parking can be looked at in different ways. So there are parking, discrete parking requirements, but there is also a way to analyze parking through the Urban Land Institute. And things like, for example, in a restaurant that has one parking space for one hundred, and has a drive-through, for example, and we cannot count the spaces, and there's a, in the drive-through, where the turnaround is very quickly, is very quick, and then suddenly, you see a big field of parking sitting within that area that could be used from an economic development point of view, that can be used more productively. But it has to be empirically analyzed. I just, I just want to put it out there. And same thing with landscaping. If there's a reduction in landscaping, well, create some community dining areas, make it interesting out there. So it has to be playful, it has to be something that, that's going to work there. So we're not just going to say no, we're just going to, parking is bad. We, we think parking is extremely important, but it's also, and, and to, Councilmember, you're, you're, you're an example of the nineties. You know, there was village-level specific plans all over in the nineties, and Ritchie Canyon had one. They, they had them all over the place. They went from, they went from villages to neighborhood commercial plans, and suddenly, big corridors came in, and the traffic was whizzing, so everybody wanted to go on those corners. We understand that. But now we're at a point now where we want to give these areas some type of a personality and identity. And one of the big things, and Mr. Duffy is, is a big proponent of this, is combining lots. For example, the Wingstop project that was just approved, they, they merged the lots, which is going to make it a very nice little multi-tenant site. If you didn't have those lots merged, then you'd have more and more and more curb cuts going everywhere. Our goal is to eliminate curb cuts, too.
Okay. Commissioner Allenies, any further questions? Commissioner Drew?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
When you put it real close to your mouth, yes.
We're going to have to, I see. Well, when I read this package, I was under the impression we were going to be talking about a downtown situation from Michigan, or the freeway to Victory. The presentation that I heard today from, was just discussing a certain area, you know, near Bank of America, and I understand we're not here to hear about that project. But from what I have heard tonight, and if we are going to be talking about from the freeway to Victoria, there's a lot of work that has to be done on Barton, as, as Councilman Wilson has discussed. Are we going to, is this something that we're going to be working on today, or is this something that's going to be created later on, as we develop this more? Are we going to be talking about speeds? Because if we're developing this much, and looking for this much commercial use, and we maintain five lanes, two lanes in each direction, and wide median, and we maintain this forty to forty-five mile an hour speed limit, with the curb cuts we have, with the sign requirements we have, I anticipate a lot of rear-end collisions. And when you have forty to forty-five mile an hour, and someone's slowing down to twenty, twenty-five to read the signs where they are, and someone comes up behind them at forty-five miles an hour, you think that's a twenty-five mile an hour change, it's not. It's, really affects that vehicle, it comes out to about thirty-five, thirty-seven mile an hour speed change, which is pretty high. So, there's a lot more that needs to be considered with Barton Road, whether we, that is my big question, was where are we going to take this from today, or is this our first lesson that we're getting in this Barton Road specific plan? And then through the planning commission and counseling and public input, we'll start to develop a better plan. In addition to our setbacks, I was concerned when the first one that I worked on here with McDonald's. But the design people, whether it was staff or the designers of McDonald's, they did an incredible job in protecting the traffic, as well as the pedestrian, bicyclists, whoever wanted to use the sidewalks. Another unique thing about these drive-throughs, they're restricted, they're narrow, curves, cause cars to drive slow. Of course, you always have the sixteen-year-old grandson who thinks he can make it through there at thirty-five. He has to learn that hard way. But the design element is well-sufficient, I feel, and we've found that with Taco Bell, and again, again, with Wingstops and the pizza place. It was a very good design to protect anybody that was on the sidewalk if someone's throttle got stuck, or whatever reason. So I think we, as the planning commission, and the staff, and the developers, are real aware of, to provide something safety. But if we're going to be going this big with Barton Road, we have to do some really design changes on Barton to control the pedestrian traffic, as well as the vehicle speed traffic. And I'll, I had lots of comments, but I can see we're supposed to be, this will be addressed as we progress through this program, through this process.
Okay. I am going to ask either Mr. Miniger, did I say that right? Or Director Weiss, or both of you, to talk about the process that's going to go through to address the comments and concerns for Commissioner Drew.
Thank you, Chairman Drew. Your comments are, are very good. I, I want to say that this is, this, this has been going on since the Greens Group came in originally, and I know there was considerable discussion on how that whole project came to, about the way it is today. The way the process is, is Michael Baker International, Peter Minigar, is the project manager on this, they, they were hired to actually do the environmental review for the corridor, and also to, to update the specific plan in select areas, not to deconstruct the specific plan, but to take it and put in areas that make it more of a modern document. Maybe Cape Cod, maybe something, maybe a pitched roof here and there, but it's not, the idea is to be able to give this, this corridor the ability for current-day developers to come in and actually build. And that's really the intent of it. So, the idea is that Michael Baker will prepare the environmental documentation, the initial study, and the, and the Barton Road specific plan update within the next several months. That's what the goal is, eight to ten weeks. At that point, we will, it will go out for public review, and the first stop would be the planning commission. The planning commission would review the Barton Road specific plan update. It would, I mean, again, it goes out for public review, so it has to go through its, the SEQA process. Peter is an expert in SEQA, he can tell you anything you need to know about that. After it goes to the planning commission, and your recommendations, and just optimistically, you're going to support the project and, and all that, then it would go to the city council for their consideration, because this is a change of zoning. So it's a zoning, it's a legislative act. So the city council will consider it, hopefully, within the, within the month or so after the planning commission makes a, a recommendation, and say that the city council adopts it. Then after that, there's what's called a second reading of the ordinance, and that ordinance would go before, so the city council would adopt that second reading. And then after that, there is what's called a cooling, cooling-off period of thirty days before it becomes law. That's, that's the, that's the process. We feel confident that working on the Greens project, working on the Barton Road specific plan in tandem, is the best, most efficient way to do it, and obviously, to get a project like Greens in, who has the vision, then can see the vision as to what Barton Road is, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a level of, it's a level of development that we have not seen on the corridor, but I wouldn't be surprised to see, I don't know if it's going to be exactly like Greens, but we've seen, we're seeing a multi-tenant site with a Wingstop and a P R A Pizza that's already pre-leased to go in there, and we are seeing, Mr. Duffy can probably provide all types of economic development scenarios that, that are occurring along the corridor. But essentially, the process is, is that within two months, we could see this update go to public hearing, to the planning commission.
Does that address your concerns?
Just a real quick follow-up, the eight-week, in other words, the environmental isn't done yet?
It's being prepared right now.
Okay. And in, in, in that environment, we'll discuss the traffic. I know we've got changes in VMTs and ADTs and that type of thing. Is there any projections of what this would?
Yes.
Would also produce?
Yes, that's an excellent question.
Thank you.
VMT, just so, not everybody might know what vehicle miles traveled means, this goes back many years, as the mayor knows what VMT is very clearly. It's an ordinance that was adopted by the council last year, but it was, it was actually adopted through the Southern California Association of Governments, and it's a different way of looking at how vehicle trips are measured. Luckily enough, in Grand Terrace, we are below the county average. You think we're a, you think we're a commute community, we're really not. We're actually well below the county average, and, and projects like Greens, or, you know, projects that actually have a neighborhood or community value, they rate higher. So commercial, retail uses, educational, things like that, they look upon very favorably. A mixed-use project, very favorably. So the traffic, the way the traffic will, will be analyzed, will be through the, the most current requirements, which would be a, a VMT and a trip generation analysis will be part of this environmental document.
All right, thank you. Further concerns?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cecenia?
All right. How's your dog license? My comments are going to back, piggyback a little bit on Councilwoman Rubliss's. One of the things I, that popped out to me immediately was about the awnings being only fabric, and knowing from my own personal experience with my own awnings at my house, that we might want to look into metal ones that are able to withstand the wind, which becomes such an issue. I really like the idea of the tree buffer between residential and commercial projects, I thought that was great. My one question, my other thing was with the landscaping requirements that we wanted to put in, to make sure that we have drought in mind. I know it was a big deal years ago, and then it's become not such a big deal, but we live in Southern California, it's going to always be with us. So with the landscaping thing, I would like to have something added in there with, to have indigenous or drought-resistant plants to be thought of. And then my other thing was cycling. I know in one thing it said that they didn't necessarily want to cycle down Barton Road, and I'm wondering where we are rerouting the cyclists to, and how much bike lanes and all of that, because it seems like if we're creating a pedestrian area, and a, you know, area to hang out, that it seems perfect for families to ride their bike downtown and get a pizza. And so if we're not wanting people to ride bikes on Barton Road, they're just going to end up on the sidewalk, running over pedestrians that we're trying to draw. So my thought was to include them in our plans with bike lanes, and I know, I have a friend who's a marathon cyclist, she rides her bike all over the world, and Grand Terrace is the best cycling she knows of. She tells me all the time, "I love riding my bike in Grand Terrace." So I think, like, in that respect, we really need to look at where we can add the most bike lanes, and, and that to encourage more of that, and to also, so they're not running our stoplights and running us off the road. You know, if we give them a lane, maybe they'll stay in it. So, that was just my thoughts on this. So that was just my thoughts on this, what came to my mind right off the top of my head. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Briggs, do you have any comments or questions at this time? Okay. Commissioner McConnell?
Thank you. Mr. Peter, please. In your many travels in the Inland Empire and other communities, have you ever seen, especially the small ones, have you ever seen with the buildup of a village-type similar concept here, a reduction in the traffic speed due to the excessive or additional pedestrian traffic?
Yeah. It's happened... You know, there's challenges and, you know, I defer to your Public Works team on the requirements of Barton Road, obviously with the proximity to the freeway. We... I spent a couple of years working on a large, very similar project for the County of Riverside in Lakeland Village, just west of Lake Elsinore. And that's along what ultimately becomes Highway 74, and it's a major thoroughfare. And ultimately, what was done was kind of focusing on how do you capture trips internally within the development and then reduce the number of points where trips are entering the main roadway, realizing that there's some circulation challenges there. So there's definitely ways to approach it, but I also realize there's safety and freeway access considerations that come into that discussion as well.
Well, I was just looking for a way to force the reduction by pedestrian traffic, for safety reasons. So maybe that's something we could look into in the future. Planning Area Two. In your document here, it says that you wanted 300-foot wide in-between approaches. Oh, and consolidation of lots, assemblage. I don't think that would work there personally. How would that work with such short lots? They're not very deep. And with a shared traffic program?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll defer to Emily Elliott on that one, if she wants to address that.
Thank you. Most of the amendments that we're recommending are for Planning Area One, so I'm actually not quite sure what you're referring to for Planning Area Two. Wondering if that's possible, if that's an existing standard within the specific plan?
I saw it in your documentation. Okay. Well, that was a concern of mine, because I work with developers, and they're not going to want to give up a building area for a secondary travel-through for vehicles. So I don't think... Personally, I don't think that would work, but I just wanted to bring it up so everybody knows that it's in here. Incentives. I wrote something down here. This is for anybody here, consultants. Some... A few years back, I can't recall when, but a local builder brought it up at the last Planning Commission meeting. San Bernardino had a permit reduction holiday to stimulate building as an incentive to build. Are you familiar with any cities in the area or anywhere that has done this? No?
No, I don't have any experience with cities that have done that.
Okay. Well, maybe I can look into that later and bring up my research on that. So another incentive could be utilizing our underground utility slush fund that we have. That would be a nice incentive, correct?
What slush fund is that?
Underground utility slush fund, I think we have.
I don't believe we have any slush funds.
Wow.
What specifically are you referring to, Commissioner McConnell?
Okay. Well, let's not call it a slush fund. Let's not call it a slush fund, but it's for...
Is it credits from Southern California Edison that can be used for undergrounding? Is that what you're talking about?
Rule 28.
I didn't know the proper terminology. My apologies. But yes, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay. Thank you. And so we don't have any actual money. We have...
Credits.
Credits that can be used towards that.
As incentives. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to that question about incentives. And I have the plan pulled up in front of me now. So there are three primary incentives that exist currently within the plan, and that is the reduction in required parking spaces, increase in building heights, and other development standards as approved by the Planning Commission. So the current plan gives quite a bit of discretion to the Planning Commission to offer additional incentives. And merits that warrant these incentives include the consolidation of lots, reduced access points or curb cuts, and the provision of reciprocal access agreements, and the provision of public or semi-public pedestrian open space.
Density bonuses?
Not at this time. At least not in the specific ambient density bonuses are allowable by the state, right? There's a certain affordability component, but there are not bonuses that exist in the specific plan.
Okay. I've seen density bonuses handed out in residential.
Correct.
Okay.
And probably the reason we don't see it in here is because there's really not the residential currently permitted within the Barton Road specific plan. It's not in Planning Area One that we're taking a close look at.
Over on Preston, there is. On the Office Professional.
Right. In the commercial district that we've been directed to really look at to accommodate projects like the Greens Group, those vacant sites, currently no residential is permitted there.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I have a question. In one of your designs, the proposal to put in Canal Street a possible signal there or having a pass-through through the middle of the south side of Barton? I'm just worried about if that would affect the traffic count, because that's really big here for potential demographic studies. We lost... Thank you. Smart and Final, because of the low traffic count. So if we put... If there was a signal at Canal and it passed through into... Over to La Paye Street to the south.
Don't we have a signal at Canal currently?
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Duffy wanted to address your comment about Smart and Final?
Well, I don't believe that we lost Smart and Final due to that particular issue. We actually gained grocery outlet instead of Smart and Final. And Smart and Final, I can tell you right now, is kicking themselves because their loss prevention is so bad where they located, they would have wanted to come to Grand Terrace.
Okay. So we have a signal at Canal, and that is not what you were talking about. You were referring to something else.
I saw it on the map. My apology. We do have a signal there, but if there's a pass on that design sketch, it connected to down by La Paye for pass-through traffic. Would that affect the traffic count for future businesses in their demographic study? Or would they... Would adversely affect?
Mr. Duffy?
Well, while we are not talking about that project specifically tonight, but there is no plan to connect to La Paye from the Greens Group project.
Well, I wasn't meaning specific for Greens Group. I was just specific it was something I saw in the packet. Okay. Well, that's pretty much it. And as far as the Smart and Final, I was quoting Mayor Stankiewicz. He said that at a meeting. So...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions or comments at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
Just a couple of things. I'd like to find out in our packet page 20, because of a 3B1A, I'm a little bit unclear on what planning area the parcel on the northeast corner of Barton and Preston is designated. Is it part of Planning Area Five? Or is it a different... A separate planning area?
Planning Area Three. It's way on the... The planning area is on the bottom, and there are numbers inside of the map.
It'd be Planning Area Five, Councilmember.
Part of Planning Area Five.
Yes, sir.
So it would be under the designation of those things that are...
Yes, sir.
...taking place with Barton.
Yes, sir.
Area Five. Okay. And then I echo Chairman Drew's information about the coordination with speeds, because, you know, it's no surprise that I've been, you know, lobbying for a slowdown in the Barton Road corridor, in our main business corridor. If we don't coordinate what our real speed is going to be, as you come up from the east and come around a very bad turn, as you come around that, because the site is limited at what's supposed to be 45, and most people drive 55 or greater, you know, it amazes me that the last time it was reviewed by Keith Industries, it said that, you know, all the speeds were cool. I think we owe it to ourselves to reexamine a legal interpretation of the prima facie speed law. Because what we're going to run into is we come up around that curve and the bad site distance there, and we maintain that 45, then you're going to have to start to figure out how to graduate down to what should be no more than a 35 in Midtown from Mount Vernon down to the freeway. And especially if we do some kind of median circumstances. So it's going to be a very sensitive kind of circumstance. I don't see how we can design without having a pretty good guess at that situation. And I don't think it should be based on the quote-unquote "prima facie," which has been interpreted in these halls as, well, if everybody goes that fast, then it's okay to go, you know, within five miles an hour of that. That's not what it says in the law. So I think it's something that we owe ourselves to look at, and then we have to incorporate that into our design. Otherwise, you're going to get exactly what Ed said. You're going to get somebody that's going to slam into the back end of somebody else. And, you know, we've got all the trappings of another 10,000 cars a day coming down through Barton Road. And another 10,000 cars at least going along the 215 corridor. So we get some of that bleed through no matter what happens. So there's going to be additional traffic. We're already experiencing what we have on Mount Vernon, but Barton Road is going to, as you can imagine, will get worse. So we're going to have to get real tricky on how we plan that. The other thing I wanted to know about is, do we have any statutory timelines that we're, you know, smashing up against here? Because I don't want a repeat of a, oh, you know, we've got two days and then we don't qualify for something, or we don't make our filing date. It'd be good for us to know what our monuments are going to be so that we can kind of work towards those rather than, you know, workshop and then bang, 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 we've got to get this, you know, and have a special meeting and make it. I think we should know that upfront, including our design teams' stuff, because otherwise, that's what we keep trapping ourselves in. And we've been waiting for, what, 30 years on this to kind of revamp? And not to say anything wrong with the performance of our team, that's not true. It's just it's the way things have worked out. It's as simple as that. So I get scared of the idea of this entire body getting trapped into some kind of a small cubicle that we're going to get, you know, slapped up against. So I'd sure like to see that kind of go around to us, so we know.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy?
Yes. I'm glad you mentioned that, because one of the things I wanted to talk about too is this, what our expectations are in terms of deliverables. And so as the consultant said earlier, and you can see from the map that's on board, this project focused primarily on the town-centered master plan. Because the Greens Group project was in the town-centered master plan. So the goal there was to try to update the town square master plan. But then the update became so insurmountable that we decided that we had to do an update to the Barton Road specific plan. So in the part of that update of the Barton Road specific plan, we wanted to talk about a system-wide Barton Road traffic study. And also looking at undergrounding on Barton Road. And we also... The council talked about the Barton Road landscaping. So we decided that it was time for us to come to the council and do a comprehensive plan. And so part of the comprehensive plan was to make sure that we were able to complete the analysis for the Greens Group project, but also update the project. So... But there is a strong desire from the council meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago and the comments tonight to expand the scope of the Barton Road specific plan. But the original delivery for this was to be able to... It first started as processing the Greens Group project, then it started out that the Barton Road specific plan area, Planning Area One, needed to be updated. But based upon the comments that we received a couple of weeks ago and also the comments tonight, the deliverables are probably going to be greater than the original scope of the project. And so we'll have to huddle with a consultant to make sure that we can address the issues that we've heard tonight, but also meet our timelines that we have for the update of the Barton Road specific plan. As Mr. Weiss said, we were anticipating to come... To go to the Planning Commission within eight to 10 weeks. And then following that, we'd go to the council. And so what we'll need to do is we'll need to take all the comments that we've heard tonight, comments that we heard a couple of weeks ago, and look at the scope of work and try to address these comments, along with also meeting our primary goal of trying to entitle that other project.
If I can have the floor just for one more second. Then would it be appropriate for us to, say, phase what we're doing, so that we can meet both?
Absolutely. I would recommend that what we do as staff and the consultants is that we look at the list of items that were brought up today and two weeks ago. And we address them as a long-term plan for updating the Barton Road specific plan. But were there items that we can address that are in that specific Planning Area One, we should incorporate those into your overall comments.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Allen, do you still have comments and questions?
Oh, it was whenever Councilmember Wilson was talking about the prima facie traffic speed laws, and I just wanted to throw my support behind that like I had last time we had this discussion a few weeks ago in a meeting we were having. And we were talking about different ways to calm the traffic down using devices and setting speed limits. And, you know, I know one of the things we learned in that meeting was how the three-fifths rule really is just not based on any kind of science. It's an assumption that came out of somebody's head years ago, and it's just they ran with it. And it's not even... They're not even saying that we... It should, you know, it's not a good rule to use. But anyway, the point being that we, as the council members, know what we want on Barton Road, and it shouldn't be determined by how fast the majority of the people can drive through there. You know, if we're wanting to use calming devices to slow traffic down, reduce the speed limit, to make it safer, and also to get more traffic into the businesses. And so I just wanted... I just hope that with this update of this Barton Road plan, that we can make that happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. All right. Any questions? Any comments? Staff, do you have anything more that you'd like to say? No? We're all talked out at this point? We have further opportunities to comment during this process. So I think there was a lot of good discussion tonight, but I wanted to give one last opportunity. All right?
I just want to say, Mayor, we're available. Any questions you have, we will do our very best to answer them. And we will develop... We'll look at all of your comments, take them very seriously, and we'll look at them and we'll evaluate them and we'll make a recommendation to you.
Okay. One of the things that I read, and Commissioner Cecenia actually gave voice to this, was that bicycles are discouraged. That's the strangest comment that I read in this... Well, one of the strangest comments. Not the only one, but I thought that was kind of odd, especially since we have hintings at bicycle lanes.
So I don't know exactly, Commissioner Cecenia, where that came from.
I don't remember what page it's on, but it is in there.
As you go... As you go up, as you head towards east on Barton, after Caltrans did the roundabout...
Right.
Bicycle lanes are appearing. Bicycle lanes don't necessarily have to be marked, but they have to be able to be designed so bicyclists, commuter bicyclists can be able to use them. Certainly, part of the plan, and in the December discussion, they did show delineation. But, you know, a lot of times, it gives one a false sense of security to just think they have an exclusive bicycle lane. Because I've heard that actually there's... Because I've, I've heard that actually there's as many accidents with, you know, exclusive lanes as there are just having the knowledge of how to ride a bicycle.
That's true. All right. Commissioner McConnell?
Thank you. I had a last-second thought from something I read a long time ago. Mr. Peter? Have you ever heard of a drone port?
One more time, what was that?
A drone port.
You know, I haven't.
You haven't? Well, we've talked about pedestrian vehicle traffic, bicycle traffic. What about a drone port in the middle of town delivering merchandise by drone?
You know, I'm gonna be honest, there's a lot of things I've encountered in my career that's not one, but something we can take down.
Well, if you follow the World Economic Forum's website, they're talking about by 2030, everything will be, well, not everything, but you, most of your stuff will be delivered by drone.
Domino's Pizza is, is sampling that concept with driverless cars to deliver pizzas.
That's fine, but what about airspace now? We haven't talked about air travel.
Yeah. It's true.
Who? FCC? Okay, so then we should address that whenever the feds come up with something.
All right. Mr. Duffy?
Mayor, I did have one final comment. I did want to just to add to, to the discussion, is that obviously this, tonight is very important for us to look at this particular issue, because from a developer's standpoint, when they can go into a community where their standards are set and they know what to expect, this works out very well. So the fact that the city 30 years ago developed the Barton Road specific plan is a, is a good indicator that the city has certain standards. This is exactly what you're doing with Commerce Way. There's a specific plan being developed for there. So, so you'll have identified uses and land uses in those areas. So we are in competition with every city in the state of California. We market ourselves as being the center of the Inland Empire, because, you know, on Main Street is in Riverside, the other half is in San Bernardino County. And so when we look at this, we look at Barton Road, we look at, we target our city and we say that we have, right now, a billion dollars' worth of projects in the environmental and planning stages. And that's from six years of work from the, from the city selling their redevelopment land to, and doing deals to make sure that there is an economic future for the city. And so the Barton Road specific plan, updating that plan, is extremely important to the city, and I, I commend the Planning Commission and the council for the time they've spent on tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. At this time, we will adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, at 6:00 P. M. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.